Good morning. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of May 23rd. All of our council is with us here in the council lower chambers with the exception of Councilmember Golforth, who will be joining us around 9:00 AM via Zoom. Mr. Reddy is here. He's just shorter than he was usually.
I can't get it up.
Look, yeah, we'll correct that shortly. No fun intended. First item on our agenda is a presentation on heat relief data and the city's anticipated heat relief response for summer 2024. Thank you very much for working on this.
Good morning, Councilman Mayor.
Morning.
Good morning.
We are glad to be here. We do have a lot of information to share with you. We will be doing a data update as well as services updates and overviews. So with me here today, I'm Lindsay Belinky. I'm the Deputy Director for Community Services, which includes our Office of Home Solutions. And Robert Campa is here with me today, our Emergency Manager.
Morning.
As well as Evan Allred, our Chief Data Officer. I also wanted just to say that it's not just us doing this work. There are many people within our city that are doing this every day, are out right now doing this work, are going door to door and just helping in every way. So this is a big team effort. So we have heard the bigger numbers about heat-related deaths, and we wanted to talk today more about the Mesa statistics. We know that 645 people have died in the county last summer and that shocking increase of 52% of heat-related deaths in the region. This is showing data by city, and so you can see Mesa is represented here. We know that of those 645 deaths, 51 of them were in Mesa last year. This is showing data over four years. And so you can see that was an increase from 36 deaths the previous year, which is a 42% increase. This data is provided by the county Public Health Department and deaths that are recorded by the coroner. So those, these are ones that are reported as heat-related deaths. We also have data by age, and so you can see here that older individuals are significantly impacted when it comes to heat-related deaths. 75% are 50 years and older. And then when you get into the 65-plus age range, we know that 44% are 65 and older. So with this data, we're really looking at our older populations and how we can help them through this time. We also have death by housing status, and so you can see here that 61% of those impacted were in stable housing and another 31% were experiencing homelessness. Additionally, we have status whether they were indoors or outdoors. And so we know that, and I should say, this is over the four-year period. So between 2020 and 2023, this data is compiling all four of those years together. So we know there were 143 total deaths in Mesa over that four-year period, and this data really shows those four years together. We do not have this data broken down by year from the county, but we're working with what we have here. So indoor deaths of those 143, 53 of those were indoors and another 90 were outdoors. Of those 90, we know that 44 of those individuals were unhoused and the other 45 were outdoors and exposed to the elements for some other reason. In addition, we have this data on deaths where it looked at the status of their air conditioning unit. And so again, of those, of those 53 total indoor deaths, we know all of those folks were in stable housing. It did not include any of our unhoused community. And of those, 92% were having an issue with their air conditioning. So it either was present but not functioning or not turned on. And we know that a smaller number, five of those individuals of those 53, did not have air conditioning at all present in their home. And so we're really looking at this data. We feel like we can take this and have some really good action items that we'll talk about a little bit later. We also know that 51% of those 143 total deaths in Mesa over four years did involve substance use of some kind. So we're also including these, these maps that reflect where in the city this is occurring. And so these, these areas that are more colorful on the map, in the orange and tan and red areas, are areas where it was determined that more significant numbers are occurring around heat-related deaths. So this is specifically for indoor. We're really able to break it down and filter it. Thank you so much to Evan for helping us with all of that. So we can really look at, again, this is the four-year totals of those 53 indoor deaths. We know that they're, they have occurred, this is by census tract within Mesa. So the more colorful areas are the more areas where there have been a more significant number of deaths. You'll see the number on each of those spaces is called out. So you can see that clearly, that we have anywhere from three to five deaths that are reported in those areas. And so we've really taken these areas as, as some target areas where we've done door-to-door outreach to all residential units in the areas. There are mobile homes in a lot of these spaces. We are actively assessing all of that, working with the mobile home manager, the community managers when possible. Thank you to Robert. He's activated some of his CERT volunteers. And Katie Pollock on my team has really gotten a great group of volunteers that are going out door to door and, and talking to people, giving them flyers, making sure they know about services that might be able to help them with their air conditioning unit or their air conditioning utility bill. The red spot out east there, that is significant, and that is mostly a county island. So we know that some of the county islands were counted in our Mesa numbers. We do not have a breakdown of what that looks like by number, but we know that red spot out there is mostly a county island. So those resources would be different for individuals living there. Obviously, we know some of our city services would not be available in that area, but we're trying to make people aware that there are other, other services, excuse me, available through the county. So we're just really analyzing all of that and trying to do our best to make sure those folks know about all the services available. Additionally, we have the map for outdoor heat-related deaths. And so again, this is the 90 reported heat-related deaths over four years. You can see some of the areas are similar on the map. We're really focusing on West Mesa is more impacted. And again, this is where we're utilizing our outreach efforts to, to make sure that our folks on the street and all of our teams that do outreach are focusing on this, these areas. You can see on the next map, we've kind of zoomed in and also filtered out where those 44 of the, of the total 90 outdoor deaths, the 44 unhoused individuals that were impacted, were mostly in these areas. And we're really calling out the, the more populated areas where deaths have occurred. But there are many other areas throughout the city where there, there was one death recorded. So these numbers, we know, don't quite add up to 44. There are single deaths throughout the, the community that are highlighted on the map too, if, if you look at the full data. And this, yes.
I'm sorry. So are heat relief centers, are they open just during the daytime and, and closed in the evening? Is that correct?
Thank you for that question, Mayor and Councilmember. So the stars on this map are showing our heat-related centers, heat relief centers in this area. Most of them, they all have varying hours. The Day Respite Center is open from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So what we've done is really followed the Public Health Department's guidance on hours of operation. They have recommended staying open till at least 7:00 PM. So at that location, we do. And then others have, have varying hours that we have posted on our website. I can get you a full list of those.
I'm sorry. What was the recommendation? What organization?
The County Public Health Department.
Okay, at least it's local. Okay.
Yes, and they, they are making those recommendations based on surveys they did to those that used the centers last year. So they're really trying to make this data specific and, and then help us understand where we need to stand up services and, and at what times of the day.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Summers.
So clearly, these are all clustered in West Mesa. There's a significant need in the county and some need in East Mesa as well. What have we done for transporting those folks from the east side to the west side and to use these services?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Summers, thank you for that question. We do have transportation available. So Robert will speak about our two-on-one, the two-on-one system for the region is adding more transportation opportunities. So what we're being told is if you call that number, they have now a partnership with Lyft, and so they're integrating better transport options for folks that need to get to a center wherever they are in the city. We also are adding a navigation team that is dedicated to heat relief for the summer, and they are mobile, they have vehicles, and they will be out in these areas and all the other areas that we know of where people tend to congregate or are more present, and they will be able to transport folks as well. So we feel like there's a lot of new transportation options for the area.
Maybe before we leave that topic, Lindsay, there's lots of church buildings and other, I mean, what's the possibility of adding an additional heat relief center on the east side, particularly around the county island, you know, hotspot?
So the mayor, the county island that was called out, those were indoor heat-related deaths. So those folks are invited.
Mobile home.
That's right. And we will talk about in a minute how we are going to try to help folks that are housed and keep them in their home and, and make sure that they do have access to cooling centers, but also that they have other resources. We are, we have met with a Together in Service group. We had about 87 faith leaders on May 1st come together, and we presented all of this information to them and really did a call to service to say, can you do something related to heat relief? We all, this is an all-hands-on-deck moment where we need everyone in the community to really pull together. Maybe if they're not a public cooling center, can you make your space available to those in your immediate area, in your congregation or your neighborhood? And, and really have a mindset to be checking on people all summer, those that are more vulnerable. If you know someone has an air conditioning issue, like let, let's connect all those dots and make sure we're all working together. So we are really working with the faith community on that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the data before we move forward? So Robert has some exciting updates too, and I'm going to hand it over to him.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Robert Campa, Emergency Manager for the city. So we use this chart here, as you can see, we use this when we had our meeting, our collaboration meeting with the county public health doctor, Dr. Sunenshine. So based off of this data, as you can see, 90% of our calls are between the hours of 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM. So on top of the data that Lindsay alluded to earlier and some of the county data, we utilize this and part of the recommendation that Dr. Sunenshine had was based off of this. So based off the hours that people have a higher need, this is what she recommended. So this is how they came to the recommendation of us possibly not standing up an overnight shelter because of the demand does not meet the need. Next slide. So they, she did talk about also in that meeting, some upgrades that they're making to two-on-one. I know that they had a lot of gaps and opportunities for improvement that they talked about. So they're putting a lot more resources into it. They are adding bilinguals, both Spanish and English. On top of that, they're also going to have the translation services for up to 137 languages to support our other communities. They are also going to be adding 30 health services workers to be able to field those heat-related calls, and they're going to be open from the hours of 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So they'll be able to do a health risk assessment and depend on what they need, what resources, and tie them into those certain resources and make sure that they're getting the right thing that they need for that individual. On top of that, the transportation that Lindsay did talk about was a big improvement. The next piece is we're going to continue our partnership with the Heat Relief Network to make sure that our current data and our hours and our locations are up to date with them. From my understanding, they also added a health coordinator or health, what is it, health specialist coordinator that they added to heat relief. So we'll be coordinating with them pretty regularly to make sure that we're up to date with our data and our locations. We're going to continue working with the Maricopa County Public Health and get their recommendations, their best practices based off of the current data that we're getting. And I'll talk to you about the new data that we're going to be getting on the next slide as well. Additional emergency management resources, so obviously we can, I've talked to the Red Cross. The public health is also standing up the Medical Reserve Corps, not only medical but non-medical volunteers as well. So if we have a need, we can request support from them, and they will provide us volunteers to help staff cooling centers and respite centers as well. So that is a request process that we can go through with the county health if we need additional volunteers to help support that. And then obviously, without our local partners, none of this would be available. So I don't want to call out names just because I don't want to miss them, but there's been a whole community effort, whole community approach. So we just really want to thank them for them standing up and doing everything that they've been able to do to help us with this heat relief efforts. Next, as you'll see, so this is some changes that have been made to our AMS tracking system. So as our crews go out and make these contacts with these medical calls, there's going to be some question prompts that are going to be required as of May 1. So this started this year. So what they're going to be asking now is specific questions to these folks that they're responding to. So is this a heat-related illness? If it isn't, then there's not going to be any further discussion. But if there is, as you can see here listed, these are the questions that we're going to ask. Was this related to an injury, an illness? Was it due to exertion? Was it due to exposure? Or do you have inadequate cooling? So depending on that, then we can offer, would you benefit from one of these services? Cooling stations? Would you benefit from access to hydration stations? Or would you be, would there be access to HVAC services that we can help you with to either fix your AC or you just don't have a working AC at all? So with this data, now we're tracking real time. We're getting daily reports and referrals to our heat relief support team, which involves Lindsay's group and our social services team. So depending on what their need is, then we'll be able to do an individual outreach to that person and figure out what is it that they need. Is it HVAC services? Or is it something that they need a shelter or a cooling center to be able to get out of the heat? So we'll be able to do those real time now with the new tracking tool that Evan and our fire data group has been able to develop. So we'll be getting daily, and it'll help us adjust our allocation of resources to the need based off of that real-time data. And then based off of the funding available, we can do things such as provide temporary ACs for them until they get their AC fixed. Or working with Mesa Chambers of Commerce to identify vendors that we've worked with in the past to help, maybe help us with AC repairs on a, on a timely basis. So we're working through those channels on the backend as well.
Yes, so to continue with that, those services that Robert just mentioned, we are adding some new things for the summer based on all of the data and our learnings. We are creating a heat relief response team, and funding is tied to that. And so with that, we're, we're really collaborating with, with, between fire and the Office of Homeless Solutions teams actively building this program. One of the things that we're adding is an air conditioning loan program. And so these are the smaller units that are literally on rollers. They're not that big, but it's becoming something that many cities are standing up to be able to very quickly help someone that is in a mobile home and presents to fire as having a heat-related issue or comes to one of our cooling centers to cool off because they don't have AC during the day. We will be working with those folks, also those that are contacting our housing rehab specialists and, and letting us know that they have these issues. We can then mobilize a temporary unit to their home and immediately help them start to cool down and stay housed, and then try to tie them to other services that might be providing a more permanent fix to their air conditioning issue. So that's a big addition to our services, and we're piloting that this summer, and we can report back to you on how that goes. But we feel confident that that will be very helpful in, in focusing on those folks that are indoors and needing assistance. In addition, we are adding a mobile heat relief navigation team. This team is really new. This will be a really new pilot effort too, in that the navigators will have office space in our Office of Homeless Solutions. They are part of Phoenix Rescue Mission, which is a nonprofit that does a lot of collaboration with other cities, and they have a really positive track record. They will be part of our team essentially, and they will have vehicles, they will have access to all of our data and the folks that we're trying to assist. So they will help housed individuals by doing wellness checks. If we receive a report from fire that someone is having challenges, we're working with fire and life safety, we can mobilize our navigators to assist or do follow-up with those folks as well. And then they will be on the street, really activating in those areas that we know need more, more people out there connecting with our homeless population and those that are unhoused, and getting them connected to services, getting them a ride to a relief center. Again, no matter where they are in the city, they'll have access to do that. And this team will then serve other responsibilities outside of heat relief, but they're really starting July 1st and, and activating quickly into the community to help us with that. In addition, we, we do have our 85 dedicated rooms for off-the-streets. And in this fiscal year, you all are aware, we had funding from the Arizona Department of Housing to extend to more rooms. So we had 28 additional rooms dedicated this year. That funding was set to expire this month, or the end of June, and we are able to extend, keep those rooms for the summer months and make sure that we have that capacity so that folks that our navigators are working with and we're trying to get emergency shelter to, we have those rooms to utilize to make sure that we have as much capacity as possible And then these are the, the services that you're more familiar with and you've heard about before. Extended outreach, working with our faith community. We're doing another conversation with them this coming week just to make sure that they're doing everything possible. We have the respite and cooling centers. So in addition to the one that we're helping with and, and standing up and extending hours to and capacity to, we have many nonprofit partners that are standing up their own cooling centers, and we're all working collaboratively together. We also, of course, have our electric utility assistance and emergency home rehab programs that we are trying to connect people to, the two-in-one call center and the additional transportation options there. And then our hydration donation and distribution campaign. We're really using that water right now, getting it right back out into the hands of people that need to, to receive it. We just want, I wanted to mention, you know, all hands-on-deck is, is definitely where we are right now. So anyone listening to this presentation, just all of us really need to be aware, you know, of people in need that might need to connect to these services, friends, family, your neighbors, like really, really checking on people and taking good care of each other during this time. And with that, we will go to questions. If you have any additional questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Ms. Duff.
Lindsay, could you differentiate between a respite center, which I, you know, resurrection ministry, and I've visited there, I understand that's a respite center, and our cooling centers, which I think are scaled down, but just to clearly differentiate those?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, thank you for that question. Yes, so the region has really worked to, to create definitions so that we're all operating on the same page. So cooling centers are air-conditioned space where you can receive water and you can come in outside of the elements. So that's, sometimes there's other services offered depending on the organization, but those, it's, it's a more basic need model. And then we have the day respite centers, which are more wraparound services. So you can get food, you can rest uninterrupted, you, we will have our navigators there, so people that can help you connect to services. We also have Circle the City visiting, so they provide medical care. There are showers on site and more services like that. You can get clothing if, or if you don't, some people are showing up without shoes. So we're just making sure they get their essential needs met and then get connected to services at that location.
So we have one respite center, or do we have more?
No, it's just one respite center.
Okay, so like PAZ, I guess would be called a cooling center. They're open in the morning and the evening, right?
St. Vincent de Paul is really the cooling center right there. They are opening, they're extending their hours to 5:00 PM. They do the breakfast service in the morning. So they're opening their campus at 7:00 AM, but that's, they're, they're kind of a graduated model. You can get water and be in the shade as early as seven, I believe, and then you can go in for a meal, and then you can stay for the cooling center. So again, every side's a little bit different. PAZ also is making water available. You can go in for the meal. They're trying to cool their outdoor space a little bit and, and think about that to be a safe haven. But they're more of a hydration station, which is where you can get water, but maybe not be in an air-conditioned space the whole time. So depending on the location, there's many different variations. Salvation Army is doing their cooling center, so they have extended their hours as well, and that's air conditioning and, and water at that location. We also had Taros join this year, so they're making their lobby available. You can go and get water near Stapley and Southern and have that as another addition to our, our program. So that's not all of them. There is, there is respite at First United Methodist as well. They're just about three hours, three days a week. So it's just not as many, it's not open to the public as often, but they do provide showers and other services at that location. That's more of a respite model.
And we have all this information as far as the locations on our website, right?
Yes, so that is mesaza.gov/summerhelp, where you can find all of our locations and also access to programs that can help serve your needs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Freeman, then Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Lindsay and Evan and
Robert.
Robert.
Sir.
For your presentation. You know, I like the data because what's alarming to me is from 2022 to 2023, if, if I'm correct, it's over a 40% increase in deaths. Is that right, Evan? A little over 40%. And why is that? Because then if you, that's on slide two, and then number four says indoor deaths by AC status. All of them had, the majority of them had AC, but it was present and non-functioning. Why was that? Now, we have identified the neighborhoods and areas that need support, and to me, it seems like, you know, walking and education and reaching out to those areas that are high efficacy in our deaths is important to help facilitate no more deaths in Mesa because 51 deaths is just really unacceptable, especially in our community. And then heat-related deaths based on substance use, you know, it's 50/50 basically, and maybe education as well. So I appreciate standing up the teams, but more importantly, how do we get air conditioning units, you know, into the homes, which you've identified ways to do that? And we need inventory to do that. We need specialists to put them in. So it takes a large team between your public safety department and your department and the nonprofits and everybody helping. So, I mean, this is a work in progress, but we do definitely need to reduce our deaths in our community, and especially on slide eight where you've identified some of the higher, well, no, slide eight is the relief centers, but we've identified some of the areas where the deaths are occurring mainly to our senior population, and we just need to curb that. So again, thank you with that, and I really look forward to having the next presentation where we don't have as many statistics and death statistics.
Yeah, but it's going to create its own heat.
And, you know, we're just, but we're just entering to the heat-related, you know, our hot months, and so we need to be out now doing the education and help reduce that and make people aware. So I know you're on it, Lindsay and your team. So with that, using faults and the other organizations in our department is essential. Excellent comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Lindsay, this is really well done. I commend you and the team, everybody for this because it identifies the problem, solutions in a concise manner, and it's an excellent presentation. Couple of questions for you related to partnerships. So you mentioned the electrical utility assistance. We have the Mesa, Mesa has its own small electric grid, and then the rest of us is, are in SRP. So what's the partnership with SRP for utility assistance to make?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Summers. We are reaching out to SRP. We know they do have some programs to help people throughout the summer. So we want to first and foremost connect folks to that resource. We are actively pursuing more, and so we're working to have a meeting with SRP to see if there's anything else that can be done there.
Yeah, it would be great if our regional partners would bring them in, because it's not just a Mesa problem, but SRP's all over. They do have the programs, as you mentioned, but having to be a partner in this
Yes.
Would be fantastic.
I agree.
The other partnerships are the healthcare centers, the hospitals, doctors' offices, as was mentioned in here. There's some There's some really contributing variables in medical conditions that make persons more susceptible to heat. Renal insufficiency, cardiac history, respiratory, even some cancers. So identifying those folks, and particularly the ones that meet the socioeconomic variable that is clearly identified here, so that we can do active outreach in the future, how we might be able to coordinate that, understanding the HIPAA restrictions. So there's a lot to it, but if we could identify folks who are hitting our emergency centers for various conditions that might contribute to future heat-related incidents, that would be another way to progress the program, and something I think we might want to talk about with our healthcare partners as well. And I really just want to say that I, I really like the, the response component of this. What it reminds me of, and Councilmember Freeman will remember this, back in the 90s, we have a crisis of drownings that still unfortunately occur to this day in the valley. And what we did is we stood up teams specific to respond as rapidly as possible to drowning incidents, to reduce that response time, try to save more lives. The fortunate thing here is I think we have a little bit more discretionary time when it comes to heat, but having that kind of a community outreach where these units would respond in tandem with potentially fire in, in order to try to control some of those situations and save lives. I'm very interested in how that, that works out, because I think that's a really good model, and particularly since we are partnering with our private sector partners. Like, there's something, I think there's a there there. This could be very effective, so well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go with Mr. Reddian, then Councilmember Julie.
I think I had a similar question on, you know, with the slide on the deaths in, in the downtown area, you know, it looks like it overlaps with our, our electric grid. For folks there, our house, I think it was a previous slide or one after, yep, that one, the other one. Yes. I think, you know, Councilmember Summers mentioned SRP, they have rebates for like mini-splits or fans, other items that folks can get to at least help with some of that relief inside their house or their mobile homes, I'm assuming, a lot of the issues are, and maybe in these areas, or older homes that maybe the, you know, AC is just not, not working properly and is, is going to take thousands of thousands. So how, how we can help support maybe with some low costs, maybe rebates, or I don't know, have we looked up, standing up some programs within our utility grid or electric, electric, what is it, company to, to help support maybe the, the folks there? And then on the other, you know, the, the indoor heat relay, related deaths, I think we can really look at tackling on an easier front than the outdoor, based on just the movement of people, looking at, you know, ways to coordinate maybe with the county or the state. I know they've, I mentioned this, they've launched various different grant programs, and is there ways to integrate, you know, those maybe lower cost maybe, AC, as you mentioned, these rolling units, or I don't know if our, if we have specific zoning ordinances on mini splits, or how, how people can install mini splits and not cost, you know, an arm and a leg, if that's something, an issue that we have internally as, as an ordinance. So what I'm trying to get with this is just, it seems like the indoor heat-related deaths, we can really tackle in an easier or in a more direct way, utilizing some of those opportunities that we can get in AC, AC-related equipment much quicker than, you know, the outdoors seems a little bit tougher for us to really solve. We can limit, but it, it's going to be a, a tough space here. But those, these indoor really can tackle those related deaths here, so.
Sorry, family here. Yeah, no, Mayor, Councilmember Reddian, Vice Mayor Reddian. We, the city of Mesa Electric Utility, which covers an area of four, is kind of interesting. That's kind of where our electric utility kind of starts staircase-ing down after a country club, so it includes some of that, but I don't know if it includes all of that. That's, that's the only thing I'm saying. But regardless, within the city of Mesa Electric Utility, Electric Utility Service Area, we do have programs, right, where after, someone's going to have to remind me the date, Mike, we don't shut off the electric utility and, what is it? May 1st, so we're already into that area, so we've
As far as the equipment?
Oh, equipment.
I see SRP has like Rebates for mini splits.
Oh.
Not just shutting, not, not, because if your AC is not working.
Then, yeah.
Like, it's not working, right?
But if you're income qualified, Lindsey and her folks can, we do have programs where you can go and provide those. Go, I'm sorry, Scott.
That's okay, no, I, I just came, we work closely, Lindsey has been sending emails back and forth to my staff over the last couple of weeks. We work closely with their group. We do have the utility assistance program, that folks can get discounts onto their electric. And then with that, that gives us information that we also are able to share with Lindsey's group to try and provide more assistance to them. So we almost look at that as like one way that we're identifying folks that meet an income level already, because they're qualifying for our summer electric assistance program, that then we're providing information over to Lindsey's group to then try and help them additionally. And I think that's where I'd turn back over to Lindsey, that she has programs, I think, that are similar to what you're discussing.
Sure. And we also have a very specific rate for low-income seniors, right, that throughout the year. So we, I think we've tried to address this in many different ways to avoid that impact, especially, and I think the point is where it's an indoor death, that where they have an air conditioning, we're like, this shouldn't happen, right? We should be able to try, and we're trying, I think that's why we're out hanging flyers at all these locations, trying to let people know that just there are resources to help you out. The outdoor is more of a challenge, and a lot of times, and Evan I think has pulled this up, and I can't remember the percentage, there's a lot of the drug-related, it's a drug-related, heat-related death. And so sometimes we see those numbers, it's a struggle between trying to differentiate, well, having heat relief centers is wonderful, but we also need to be working on the drug abuse too, because that, that is a major contributing factor, insignificant amount of these deaths.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Spilsbury.
On that really quick, the substance abuse slide doesn't differentiate between indoor and outdoor, correct?
Correct. We do have a slide at the very end.
But Evan, the majority, there's a lot of the outdoor was related to that, right? Did I see that?
Yes, we will pull that up. We didn't have that in the presentation, but we do have data on that after questions.
It's strongly correlated.
It should be at the very end.
Yeah, okay.
Keep going, keep going. Okay, here's, oh, there we go. Yes, so this is showing unsheltered versus housed individuals. And I'm going to let Evan talk about some of this, because it's a little more detailed. On drug cause versus drug contributed, we also have heat cause versus heat contributed. And so those are kind of specialty definitions that the county has provided.
So Mayor, Council, on the topic of substance abuse, where the death was related to substance abuse, you're right, many of those are on, on the west side of Mesa. So when the county gave us that data, they give it to us aggregated by ZIP codes, not by census tracts, so I'm going to kind of change the geography for a second. Think about those three ZIP codes on West Mesa, bounded on the east by Mesa Drive, out to the, the, the west boundaries of Mesa and the north and south boundaries of Mesa. 87% of the deaths that occurred within that area involve substance abuse, and many of those were outdoor deaths as well. So it kind of gives the tale of, of, you know, substance abuse, outdoor and indoor deaths, and the different contributing factors to those. The issue that, that Lindsey raises about drug cause versus drug contributed, so when the county does their statistical analysis of the deaths, they look at the, the coroner's reported death certificate as to what were the causes of the deaths versus what were contributing factors. So that's how they're making that differentiation. Was it a, was it in the sequence of death? That would be heat caused, or similarly with drug cause, was it in the sequence of the death, or was it just a contributing factor?
Okay. And then my other question was on the, so thank you for reaching out to the Together in Service, I love that you did that. And then is there a mechanism to find out what they're all going to do? Is there a database that they're all going to contribute to or something?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, that's a great question. We are sending out an after-action survey on Tuesday, I believe, to, to say, okay, now that you've received all this information, what are you doing with it, or what have you done with it? So I can let you know what comes back from that. And then we're also in that, just putting reminders, like if you haven't done anything yet, here are some action items that, that could be helpful.
Just so that we can have some sort of, you know, resource list or something, that we know like which churches are going to be open on which days or which times, or I don't know.
Yes, we will definitely add that as, as we become aware.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Lindsey, I have a follow-up question on inventory, on the portable cooling units or window unit. Are we going to have that in our inventory, or is that going to be provided by someone else? And because my point is, is getting them installed, because somebody may want to stay in their home.
Yes.
And, and so do they have that option?
Yes, so thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. We are actively purchasing those. We do, we know that Fire and Life Safety has one that they've used as kind of their, their resource over the last year, I believe they purchased that. We are purchasing some next week and really getting very knowledgeable about all of that. So we will have them at the Office of Homeless Solutions, and then Fire and Life Safety will have some as well. And what we're doing right now is buying a handful of them and getting to know them and install them and, and see which ones are the better ones to be using. And we don't want to buy 20 or 30 and then just having them sit there too. So we want to make sure there's, you know, we can apply them in the community and purchase more as we go. But we will make sure that we have an inventory of them as we build this throughout the summer. There's a lot of learning going into this. We are sharing best practices with the region too, so this is one thing we're trying, and then we're, we're hearing other ideas and coming up with other things and are able to quickly activate in other ways as well. So we will learn a lot this summer and build upon this response as we go.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more question. In the programming, whether from the county or from, is there an outreach on education about what are the symptoms of heat exhaustion? That people maybe don't recognize they're slipping into a very dangerous zone, you know, dizziness, heartbeat, sick to the stomach. I think there's a lot of signs that you're slipping into, that you might just think, I'm not feeling well today, and then it's too late.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, thank you for that question. Yes, the Public Health Department has a lot of good infographics and helpful things. I believe Fire has their own resources as well. We're adding those to our social media outreach, we're working with our PIO team right now, creating our own versions of those. We'll be putting all of that out throughout the summer, and that will be on the Summer Help page as well. So we'll do an active education campaign too. Thank you.
Well, I'll just echo what my colleagues have said. Thank you for the response. This is exactly what I was hoping to see, and, and I appreciate the all-hands-on-deck approach. It is sobering to, to see that, that 645 number was the shocking thing that I think attracted our attention, and, but the, the 51 number is a lot better, but it's still, as has been said, those are all preventable deaths. And, and so I think we need to, as a community, move this to the top of our agenda for the next five, six months. I would hope that when we convene, we're getting updates on how things are going and how, how we've learned to better, best respond and, and what ways our community partners have, have stepped up. So thank you, thank you for the database approach. I think this is a great plan with the temporary AC units, the, the role that electric utilities playing, more, more navigators, the continuation of off-the-streets with the additional room. Together in Service, I think, is going to play a role here. I'm, I'm curious, it is, it sounds like we're asking them, tell us what you can do, which I think is the right question to ask, but I wonder, are, are there some holes in our safety net that we can specifically say, hey, we have these specific needs? Is there anybody, you know, in the faith community that can respond to these specific, you know, weaknesses that we have in our plan? But, and then one more thought. Yesterday, I was at another MAGA meeting where this was discussed, and this time, instead of Dr. Sunshine, it was the State Director of Heat Relief, another medical doctor, and gave a great presentation with a lot of, it sounded like a lot of resources available at the state level. So I'm just hoping that in addition to meeting with Dr. Sunshine, thank you, that we're coordinating with, with the governor's office as well, because there might be, I assume you know this already, but there might be some additional funding or resources, and it would probably be good just to sit down and say, here, here's our plan, can you critique it? Do you see, you know, are, are there opportunities to collaborate here that you, that we're not aware of? Is there some state funding that perhaps we can, or FEMA funding, you know, that we can, can tack on to? So I guess my point is that, let, let's make this a top agenda item, and if there's any lack of resources, please let us know, and we'll go beg and borrow from the federal government or the state or county government to make sure that, that in hindsight, we don't say, well, yeah, we could have saved some life if we would have allocated resources a little more effectively. But again, a wonderful response. Now, we have a great action plan. I think it would be another shame if we had this great, all these great resources ready to go, but the people who needed them or the people who were going to see something and say something didn't, were unaware of them. So I think the, the communications plan is equally important to the action plan. So we need a, some press releases, we need the PR, you know, saying, hey, if you see somebody on the, if you have a, if you're aware of somebody who has sketchy AC services, don't, you know, just worry about them. Dial 211 or 911, and we'll take care of that. You know, people need to know the resources are just a phone call away. So I don't see Anna right now.
Well, but Mayor, Lindsey, do talk about, we, we've used this data about where, that's historically, we've seen these incidents of, of heat-related deaths, and so we're targeting specifically those areas. Why don't you talk a little bit, because we're literally just going door to door.
Yeah, the hanging flyers thing, I, I love that. That's what's frustrating to me about this, is we know who's going to die, when they're going to die, where they're going to die, what their age is, what their demographics are, you know. We, we can literally walk up to somebody and say, you're, you're a risk, right? So that's what, and I know we're, we're targeting them as we should, but what, what's the rest of this communications plan?
Yes, Mayor, I am working closely with Anna. I believe she's out of the state right now at a conference, but she and I are talking daily. We're putting out information next week in, in the form of a press release, and we're talking about all the, the full communication plan to provide more education and access to these resources. So we are establishing that. We've already done a lot of work together, and we have, we are working on that together.
Thank you, well, I, again, I, I have high praise for the work that's gone into this. I would just want to, as the summer progresses, let's just pay very close attention to this with this shared goal of eliminating heat-related deaths in Mesa. There's no excuse for it. But thank you very much, great plan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council, any other questions on this agenda item? Okay, we'll look forward to being updated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1B on our agenda is a continuation of our discussion from Monday night on the proposed 2024 general obligation bond. I know Beth, we
So Mayor, I think we're going to start on slide 17, we're going to pick up where we didn't finish, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm going to ask Andrea Moore to come back up and join me for the, this part of the presentation. We are starting on slide 17.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Andrea Moore, Director, Parks Recreation and Community Facilities. Andrea Moore, Director, Parks Recreation and Community Facilities. So picking up where we left off, we have a proposed project for trail development, trailhead and trail connections on property that we are, we have both a patent deed on the southern part of what's shown on the screen and then BLM lease, Bureau of Land Management, on the north portion. So there are social trails through this parcel. It's about 150 acres and we are proposing to formalize this, provide trailhead with restroom, drinking fountain. And then our hope, as shown on the left side of the screen, is to do a connection from this parcel using flood control property that connects all the way up to the northern boundary of the city. It's the flood retaining structure that is right next to the 202 freeway. And then that will also connect in with the Hoz Loop Trail System in the Tonno National Forest. So what we're proposing in the bond program is to create that trailhead and the trails within the Bureau of Land Management property that extends from Brown to McKellips on the east side of the 202.
And Andrea, doesn't this also include cooperation with, is it CAP or McFlood?
It's McFlood, it's Maricopa County.
Maricopa County. So this is a, it's going to take some partnerships, right? Multi-jurisdictions, both the federal government, I mean, the federal government's already provided land to us, but we have to, we can only use it for park purposes? Is that correct?
Correct. It's recreational and public purpose.
Recreational and public purpose. And then to get along this path or along this trail, we've had some successful, promising conversations with the county's flood control district to access along their, is it a ride away or their?
Flood retaining structure. So it's their maintenance area for maintaining that flood structure that keeps floodwater from coming to the southwest.
The idea is to eventually get it connected as far north as we can to get onto the existing Hoz Loop trails.
So it, does this system actually connect to the Hoz Trail System or we just see the potential that it could someday?
So the bond portion of what we're proposing is within the Bureau of Land Management parcel. And then, so that's trailhead, support facilities. What we're starting right now is the study to determine what that exact alignment looks like north of there and to be able to enter into an agreement with the Maricopa County about that access. This wouldn't be that trail improvement, those maintenance roads are already there, but it creates the trailhead for people to start from.
So you can connect to existing built-up space that someone could go across?
Right, through those maintenance.
Not necessarily that we'd have to spend money, but it accesses those.
So the existing maintenance roads that are adjacent to the flood control ditches, someone could, if we establish a trailhead there, people could use gravel bikes and just be on the dirt roads.
Correct.
But eventually that could lead them up to the Hoz Trail System where we have a really robust mountain biking trail.
Correct.
Okay, and so.
And that's through Tonno National Forest, right? So that's not in city, the city boundaries anymore, but this gets us to that location through that agreement.
Kind of leverages doing our part and working with the, I guess, partners. It opens that up for a much longer connected pathway.
Yeah, that's great. How many miles long is this?
I know the mileage within that parcel. So there's a lot of social trails in there already, but formalizing those so that people are staying within designated trails, about 4.7 miles. And then going from McKellips up to the north boundary of the city is, what, probably another five miles straight through.
Yeah. So the little icon that's at the top of the future trail, is that, is that a T for a trailhead or, I mean, would there be a trailhead at one end and then at the other end? Is that the plan?
Right, so there's the park and ride facility that's under the 202 bridge currently and that would continue to be used.
Okay.
The county through the Maricopa Trail has also created another trailhead north of the city boundary, just south of Granite Reef Dam. So that continues to be available. So this just creates that connectivity from spot to spot to get there.
But Andrea, you would create, you would create a new trailhead at, what, McKellips?
McKellips and 76 in that parcel, correct.
So this connects that park and ride under the freeway near Los Indes.
Correct.
All the way out to the Red Mountain Park area where we have all that federal property that was given to us for recreational purposes.
Correct.
That's, that would be an amazing connection.
And then the blue dotted line that you see north of that symbol is what transportation's currently working on for a shared use path.
All right, I'm sorry, we started this without Councilmember Goldthorpe because I know she's very passionate about this, but I'm sure she's pleased to see this.
She, this is what she.
Yeah, she's been pushing for this, hasn't she? So we'll give her the credit for raising our awareness about this.
I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to move on into cultural and educational opportunities with the IDEA Museum and Jared's going to come up and help me with the IDEA Museum. If you notice this week, starting on Monday, we started some construction with our current project. So they are under construction as we speak.
We are. I just came from a 6:30 construction meeting before this, so very exciting, very exciting. But Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel, I'm really excited to be here to talk about the continued renovation work that's happening at the IDEA Museum. I was asked to provide a little bit of context and history into this project, so I'll start with that. And in the presentation, you'll see that it was about 10 years ago that the City of Mesa identified a need to update and renovate the IDEA Museum. We then hired Gyroscope Inc., which was a, is a very respected and renowned museum design and planning firm. And we worked with them for a couple of years to develop a comprehensive master plan. That was completed in 2018. Shortly after that, the IDEA Museum was included in a community-approved bond. Then, as many of you know, the COVID-19 pandemic impacted many projects here in the City of Mesa. But more importantly, it impacted our community, especially related to youth development, early childhood education and family well-being. So noting that, the IDEA Museum staff spent about a year really collecting information from the community. So we met with or surveyed thousands of community members and interviewed many community leaders, also collected over 1,000 drawings from kiddos, asking what are they looking for in the next iteration of the IDEA Museum? So we took all of that information, categorized it, looked at the initial master plan and started working with a local architectural firm to come up with a new, updated phased renovation plan. We pulled out Phase 1 of this renovation plan, which includes many system updates to help set us up for the next phase of the renovation, completed that design work and, as Beth noted, we're in construction right now with the next phase set to be complete or this initial phase set to be complete in the fall. So very excited about that. I should also note that just several months ago, our foundation, the IDEA Museum Foundation, started a community fundraising campaign to support this project. And we've seen great support with that, highlighted by a $500,000 contribution from the Whitman Family Foundation and multiple $250,000 contributions, with a large contribution coming to council in just a couple of weeks for approval, with, I believe, about $600,000 in asks out right now. So again, a lot of community support for both phases of this project. But if we are on the next bond and we are at the level that is indicated, there's many key objectives that we'll be able to complete. If you want to move to the next slide here. With this funds, we'll be able to really transform our existing and add new gallery spaces to the IDEA Museum and to better align with the community need we've identified. So an example of that would be the transformation of the Artville Gallery. So many of you know Artville. It's a space dedicated to early learning and children ages zero to four. We would transform that space to the Imagination Gallery. They would focus on storytelling, would focus on literacy, because in addition to interviewing our community in this process, we also looked at bigger data sets and how we can impact those. Third-grade reading proficiency is a very important data set when it looks at the trajectory of a child's life. And so this particular space would help us intentionally impact that key metric and help the well-being of our community and those kiddos. One of the most commonly asked-for items in this research was an art studio. So that's something that we are really excited about adding to the IDEA Museum. We were founded 46 years ago as the first and only children's museum that focused on visual arts and fine arts. And so we live that value today, but we don't have a, an art studio. We don't have a space that we always have painting, always have pottery, always drawing. So that is something our community's asking for, that we really want to be able to provide. We'll look at our exterior spaces. So right now, we have one exterior space, our atrium. It's a beautiful space. It gets used very, very regularly, but it's closed periodically throughout the year because of heat, but also it hosts a retention basin. So when it rains, sometimes that retention basin, if we don't pump it out, it can be closed for weeks at a time because that's a safety hazard. So we'll be able to address that, add more programmatic space there. We'll also be able to look at our underutilized spaces, so our storage spaces and our second level space, which will be vacant here in November. Is, we're a small museum for the number of people we see and we're seeing extreme growth. We're up about 40% compared to pre-COVID numbers, so we're seeing a lot of visitation. And about 25% of our visitors, so almost 30,000 people are coming through our doors that are disadvantaged families or underserved audiences. So it's very important that we're able to provide resources for our community. We'll also be looking at our revenue generating spaces, such as our classroom, to be able to add dividers in that space so we can run multiple classes, multiple birthday parties to increase our revenue, excuse me, to increase our revenue and offer more programmatic experiences at the same time. And then finally, we really want to be able to update our exterior to better reflect our mission, vision, values and community need. That way, families, as they see our brand, they see our physical space, they'll be able to understand our mission, they'll be able to know that the IDEA Museum is a resource for them right away and they'll want to be able to connect with our mission and values. So this is just a brief overview of some of the things we'll be able to accomplish through this bond funding. And I know many of you were at the community listening sessions that saw a more comprehensive kind of presentation on all the different spaces, but we appreciate your consideration of this project and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm super excited about this. Can you just briefly explain how much the museum will have to be closed during renovation, during this one and the next one?
Yeah, so the next phase of renovation, the closure, that's, it's a very complicated equation to look at because it's not just the spaces we'll be working on, it's continuity of programming and services. But I'll talk a little bit about this phase of renovation. So right now, we're planning for a four-day closure and much work happening on our Monday closures as well. June 10 through the 13th, the IDEA Museum will be closed. There's a potential that in August or early September, we might have to do another closure as we look at some of these systems upgrades for electrical or plumbing. But right now, we're only planning for that four-day closure. The next phase, so I've run capital campaigns and large museum projects at different institutions I've run. And hopefully, we'll be able to look at a phased approach in which you'll look at and update one particular space at a time so we're still able to continue our programming and services. But if we do have to do a more long-term closure, just as we're doing right now, we're still going to be connecting with our community, doing programming at the library and different community organizations.
Okay, I kind of knew all of that, but I wanted to make sure people knew that we're doing our best to be able to keep it open as much as possible.
Absolutely.
I know that people depend on this, especially during the summer months, and so I just think it's amazing that you guys are able to do that and really work to keep it open as much as possible, so.
And even during our closure on June 10 through the 13th, we're still going to be running our summer, our summer camp, excuse me. So we'll still have many, many kids at the museum, just in a separate space.
Great, thank you.
My last chance to say something to Jared. Great job. I think this is evidence of, this is how we are going to elevate our museums from where they're at to where we aspire to have them. The potential for the IDEA Museum is unlimited and the love that the community has for this and the appetite that the community has for this type of a service is, again, unlimited. So I think it's taken a while to get us to this point, but clearly, we know exactly what we need to do going forward now. And so I think this is prime for being on the ballot and it's going to get a lot of community support.
Thank you, we're excited to.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you, Jared. So we're going to move on to the Shrine House and Jeff McBay's going to join me here to talk a bit about this project.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. So just as a quick reminder, Shrine House is an idea that was generated back in 2017, 2018 as part of the Imagine Mesa campaign. The community came up with the idea of having a green education and dining, I'm sorry, a green education and dining at the Shrine House is one of the top vote-getters of that entire campaign. Based on that citizen-generated concept, we did create a concept that you see on the screen today. We did present it back in 2023, April 2023, at Council. We are now at the stage of taking this concept and taking it into further design development so that we can come back with a full project to build out. What we are including on the bond package for your consideration is funding to be able to complete the entire concept instead of a phased approach that we had previously presented to you in April of last year.
Thank you, yeah. Over the years, we've gotten, I think, this detailed presentation, so we're not strangers to it. And I love the idea of just doing it, right? Rather than prolonging it and maybe moving some of the money originally allocated over to the Neon Garden and then coming back with full funding for this, that makes a lot of sense and I endorse that.
Just quickly, Jeff, just highlight, we've got just kind of the, what do you call it, the different concepts, right? You have the educational garden, you have the restaurant, just kind of maybe gathering spaces, highlight just the maybe those big highlights there.
So I will follow Beth's cursor on the screen down in the southwest corner. That is the actual farming area, so that would be a farm that would be active, but it'd also be part of our educational component. We have done actually a solicitation for Partner Farms to take on the role as our urban farmer. We are very, very pleased to let you know that Steadfast Farms expressed their interest and we have begun working with them on creating an agreement to have them operate a farm. Just to the, just to the north of that would include the education area, so there'd be a shaded area where they could provide some of the educational content. The existing adobe building that is to, on the far west side, would be converted to have restroom facilities. As you continue north, there would also be, continue to have some more farm area, but that would be in more in the raised planter areas where you could have herbs and vegetables, things along that line. May also have the opportunity for cut flower, fresh-cut flowers. And then wrapping around the front along Second Street and Center Street, oh, good stop, along Second Street, we will adjust the curb line to create some pull-out area where we could align food trucks so that we can have pop-up events that would take and help activate the space that's along the north side. And then all along Center Street is to create a very, very nice, I say, opportunity for active as well as passive programming for the space to help keep it active. And then as you go down to the south end, there would be the addition of some significant shade structures that would be able to house the pop-up restaurant uses as well as potentially the farm stand or end or farm store, similar to what Steadfast Farms has done out at Eastmark.
This is amazing placemaking. This is going to be another much-beloved venue for all kinds of activities, all kinds of groups. We're going to wear this out, so it's very exciting.
Here, I'll just add, I think, Jeff, how many, six years ago?
It's been, it's been a little bit, Mr. Freeman.
I know we've been some, talked about planning and programming and opportunities, educational opportunities, bringing in the University of Arizona Extension Office and other, you know, small-type farms to develop and educate people on how they can become self-reliant if some type of gardening concept is there, then farm-to-table concept and, you know, and not only that, the preservation of the house of itself, you know, people need to see that. And if you, if we can get that and have all the amenities around there, I think it's going to be a hit to downtown Mesa. When I say a hit, it'll be something that people, you know, people will want to come to because we have a lot of people who would relish just walking around and learning about the history of this area. So, yeah, I mean, when we started six or seven years ago, I was all in. Thank you.
So similar to my questions with the Neon Garden, how much of this is publicly accessible? At what times are there gates? Are there, is the summer people can hang out?
There will be, there will be, as it exists today, you know, we have the nice white picket fence, that is not necessarily going to be able to maintain that, the wood isn't so good, but we will be including. But we will be including with the program, still have site security, but it is going to be a publicly accessible facility. There is, the farm component will be, also will be, have a separate layer of fencing because they are going to be an active farm in which they are producing, you know, growing produce that they will be selling. But the intent is to have this available to the public. The Shrine House itself will be, you know, we will have to program that in partnership with, you know, Mesa Preserve, I'm sorry, Mesa Historical Museum owns all of the assets that are inside the building. The Natural History Museum has a responsibility for maintaining the building in general. So we'll have to work on how the building is actually programmed and when that is opened up to the public. But the site itself should be generally accessible.
So it totally makes sense that you'd have the house and the farm area closed off. But from this picture, like, the picnic tables and trees and benches would be accessible for anyone?
Probably be like a park. Yep.
Like a park. Perfect. That's what I wanted, was like, a space.
Yeah, that would be fair. I think that's, Andrew, does that sound right?
Okay, great.
We want people to feel comfortable. There's a very nice passeo. We don't necessarily, we don't have the rendering, but there is a very nice passeo with, you know, bistro lights stringing across it. We would like people to be, feel welcome to walk through as they, as they're coming downstairs.
If there's no programming going on, they could still have access to some of those.
Are there bathrooms?
There, as part of the historic adobe building on the west side behind the Shrine House, that will be renovated to have bathrooms. We'll have to discuss whether the bathrooms would be.
Another set of bathrooms.
Those will have limited hours. Yeah, those will likely only be open during times of specific events.
Scott?
Well, historically speaking, there were no bathrooms at the time, so maybe there shouldn't be. There were outhouses.
Will there be plumbing to the bathrooms?
Yes, we're not building outhouses.
All right. Historical accuracy.
We're not trying to, yeah. There's some things we moved on from.
Sorry, I pulled a pin on that joke grenade now. Are we going to be, is part of this bond package, just to be clear, including structural renovations to the house itself?
So the Shrine House has, actually, over the course of the last couple of years, had been, we have been working to fix some of the ongoing O and M issues. The roof has been replaced. There will be some structural improvements that are made that are necessary to the house, but that is being handled through a separate project, and it's already funded through, I think.
The bond is just for.
Yeah, we're down in the basement. I don't, we did work in the basement. We've got some roofing.
There's been some patching.
The next phase, a big part of the next phase is renovating the porch.
Yeah, that's.
And it has to come off and be replaced.
And then rebuilding some of the basement structure.
And you have to re-point some of the brick too, right?
Right, okay. So the, so this bond will include some of that?
No, no, we've already, we've already covered.
That's already funded.
That's covered separately. So this bond is strictly for the grounds around.
Because we knew regardless of this project, we still needed to keep that historic building intact, right? We needed, so we'd already programmed that in here. But this is now, the bond allows us to create all the space, the build-out space, the programming space around it.
All right. So, I mean, I have some thoughts on the building itself, which is not relevant to this discussion. So I'll talk to you about that later.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Duff?
Thank you. I love this project. It's been a wish and a dream for a lot of us for a long time. So thank you for all your work, and hopefully, we'll see it come to fruition through the bond approval. Do you think there's an option, or is there space to do a farmers' market? We've really struggled in downtown. And when I moved to downtown, like, 2009, the farmers' market actually was on the other side of center across from the Shrine House, pretty much. And it had a following, but we've really struggled since then and moving it and trying to find the right place. And this seems like it fits right in the theme. It'd be great to let it take root, no pun intended, to be a fabulous farmers' market beyond what it is now.
I can't speak for our current producer of the farmers' market, but we will certainly be happy to discuss that with her and see whether or not she'd be, have an interest. The one upside that I can say is that with Steadfast Farms and their intent to have a farm stand, farm market, we will, we will at the very least have the opportunity for a very, on a multiple days, have the opportunity to visit the farm and pick up produce outside of a one-day farmers' market event.
That'd be wonderful to have readily available at least some vegetables in downtown. It is a problem to get anything fresh in downtown. We do have a few spots. I don't want to take away from that, but it certainly doesn't satisfy what we need. So the passeo area might be, it would have enough room to host something like that if that was an option?
I think, I think as a small-scale farmers' market, it would definitely have enough room for some 10-by-10 tents lining that passeo. And if it ever got large enough, you know, not that I, you know, we can say it today, but if it ever got larger than that, we have quite a bit of right-of-way and space between the street and the property as well that we could expand out and create something more significant.
Yeah, yeah. Well, great work, and thank you for everything.
Thank you. I'll note that we've been joined by Councilmember Goforth. Alicia, are you with us?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, great. Thank you. I know you're coming from another city event this morning, and I apologize, we already did have the conversation about the trail system, but we gave you full credit for a really good idea. I just want you to know. But thank you for joining us, and thank you for covering that other event this morning.
Absolutely.
On this, or anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll wrap up with the cost summary. The projects that we've all discussed for active lifestyles and cultural are at $166.2 million, are estimates combined. This is what the citywide plan would look like with community safety at 88 and three-quarters and active lifestyles and cultural education at 166, two-tenths. And then you can see the total at the bottom, just right under 255. So, and then you can see the yellow dots represent the projects. The orange line is actually the fiber project that we talked about on Monday night.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Irma, if you'd like to join me, maybe we could have a conversation. She slipped out.
Irma's coming in hot.
She did. Look at that.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilwoman Ashworth, Finance Director. And I'm here to talk about the impact on the Mesa residents of the bond package. The average annual impact over 26 years is in the chart. We typically issue 20-year bonds, and we would expect that these bonds would be issued over six-year periods. So that's where we come up with the 26 years. And in the voter information packet, we are required to show what the impact would be on the Mesa median assessed value, which is $177,000 for this year. That assessed value is the median value, which means half of them are higher than that, half of them are lower than that. And it's a limited property value. It's what we're taxed on. We are not taxed on the sales value of the home. So this is not the sales value of the average or the Mesa median value. And we're also required to show what the impact would be if the assessed value was $250,000. And so that's the number that you see on the left. So if we focus on the $250 million bond amount, it would be $49 average annual over that 26-year period for the Mesa median assessed value and $69 average annual over the 26 years for assessed value of $250,000.
So, Mayor and Council, this is very confusing because this is, one, these are coming from values, correct me if I'm wrong, Irma, while we're showing them today, what would be the assessed value. It was, they're actually derived from values.
At least a couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago. So, because we all know what's happened in the last couple of years. And then these are what your properties assessed at, not the sales value, not what you'll read about the average cost of a home, right? When you read whatever, $350,000, $400,000 in Mesa or whatever. That's not, I mean, that number gets reduced, right, and becomes these numbers down here. So the best we could do is take the median from what the county gives us. So that's just, you know, again, whatever the median is today or whatever it was two years ago, which might have been, whatever, 350, I'm just making up a number, but let's assume today, I hear in our Valance Housing Report, I think I saw a number like 350 or 400,000. Ultimately, those numbers through the becoming what the limited property value is, what gets assessed, are these numbers. So we're trying to do our best to give you a sense of what the market, you know, because we all know and hear sales values, right? What people are getting for the sale of their home. That's not what this is. But this is what the county on the role, what you're, to determine that your taxes, this is the value that's used. So I know it's confusing, but it is coming from the roles from the county. It is the median number. And every year, that number will keep getting updated. And when you, what you'll see, and not to confuse, don't confuse what you're hearing here, Irma's going to come back in a couple of weeks?
Next week.
Next week, sorry, about the secondary property tax that we need to, what we need for the current debt. And you'll see that because of both new construction and increasing values and property, that's going to have a mitigating effect against the rate because that base has grown. And so the rate actually, give my little teaser, the rate will be what?
The same.
The same. So some of these things will play out over time. But we have to take what's in front of us from the county to give you a number. The number that will be in the pamphlet that goes out publicly is which one of these numbers I always forget.
It would be both of them, but this is assuming that it would be one question for 250 million. So if we have two questions, then there would be two calculations, one for each value.
Oh, okay.
So remind me, what was the public safety amount and what is the?
Eighty, it's about 90 million.
Okay, so that's less than this chart.
Correct.
And then?
But combined, the two combined are just over, it's 255. Now, I will say, after our last meeting, I want to say this, that we, there was a concern, Councilmember Summers expressed about the amount of funds we had allocated for the fire medical substation. So that total is now, for that project, is $5 million. So it's, it's going to be, we're going to be up closer to 256, I think, by the time we get done with the total of everything. So the community safety number, let's just say it's going to be 90, pretty much. And then you see the other number here.
So combined, is that closer to 250 or 300?
It's going to be, well, it's still going to be closer to 250, because it'll be about 256, 256 point something, I think. At some point, we're going to round these numbers up because it is not good for, I mean, .35, we are, it'll probably be $90 million in public safety, more or less, and probably, you know, we'll pick a number like.
170?
170 and the other.
So to be clear, just using the fire station as an example, I did a little background of research and found a facility similar to what's being suggested in, now, this is in California, but it was only due a couple of years ago. And the cost for that facility was $5 million, constructed the same way that, I think, engineering's recommended. However, if Mr. Brady is accurate and we can reduce that cost, we do not have to sell $5 million of those bonds, correct?
Yeah, and the way it works, right, all these projects are brought forward, what will happen is public safety has, the funds in public safety stay in public safety. So we often have an opportunity to move dollars back and forth. If a project comes under budget, we can move it into another project within public safety. And same thing for the parks and cultural. Do that now. Typically, once I put a number out there, staff's really good at spending right up to that number and more. But we'll try to, we'll manage within that context.
Let's not do the more part, but I think the 911 center and the substation together and giving staff the room, this is an important project. The station is needed. I want to make sure it's adequately funded. So I appreciate working with staff and Mr. Brady on finding a number I think is realistic.
So, Mayor, I think where we'll end up, just to be very clear, is total 90 million in community safety and about 170 in the active lifestyle, or the parks and culture. And then the total number is 260. That's what would be on the ballot. And that gives us, you know, just what we think we need. Again, we're, like Irma just said, and we want to be very clear, because this is the hard part of this. We get these approved, and then we're going to come back to council and say, okay, this is a six-year program. Which programs are going to go now? Which programs are going to take a little bit longer? And you can see naturally, like, Jared's here, he's, if I had $20 million in about a year from now, he could spend 20, you know, to go in. Some of these projects, the Shrine House, right, we've already done most of the work. There's still a little more design, but that could go early. So we'll come back to you with a schedule of when those projects will be scheduled. Then each year, we come to council, Irma comes to council and says, okay, based on what we anticipate the construction schedules are, we will have issued, we'll issue just the amount of debt. We can only issue just for what we need. So every year, and then Irma comes back and says, and that tax rate, here's what that will impact the rate. In this case, this year, you're going to hear, we don't have to increase the tax rate at all. So.
Great.
Here, oh, sorry. Frankie saw it. It wasn't me.
Mayor.
It's low.
I wonder if I could ask one more question on the public safety bond. So we've allocated 20 million for fire apparatus. I know we did a, we recently added an all-electric fire truck. Is this going to be diesel-operated apparatus? Are we looking at more electric fire trucks? What specifically are we looking at for the $20 million? We happen to have a chief.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmember Summers. Thanks for the question. James Johnson, Assistant Chief, Mesa Fire Medical. The electric truck is not in that bond. As you know, the expensive apparatus, let alone the electric truck, is pretty much double. So we want to continue to gather information on our current truck, which is working out very well. But we want to get more information, and hopefully, the market will level out and decrease on those costs, and then we can look at including those.
Okay, so for this purpose, we're looking at replacing our existing internal combustion engine apparatus?
Yes.
And they're going to be red?
Yellow?
All right. Hey, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brady, just to go back to your comments on, it looks like we fall into $49 combined around there. That would mean a potential like $4 a month for residents, average, right? So, but as you mentioned, you know, these go to the secondary property tax, right? And so there's been these last couple of years, it's been lower or at the same as it's going to come in this year. So I think that's, that's something to tell as well with folks, how we are investing back into our neighborhoods, our parks, and our community, and how, you know, $4 will take us to the future in a lot of these projects, right? Or sometimes, depending on the year, it's zero, right? Depending on what you pay on the secondary property tax as far as the growth that we've had. So I think just putting into context of that, how investing into bonds like this, look at our neighborhoods and our community assets and how that provides for the future and our families in a cost that I think is manageable for us to look at and how that impacts long-term, right? So.
Yeah. Just one clarification, you're correct, the rate may, the rate will be the same. Now, if your property value went up with that same rate, your taxes may go up a slight amount. Now, it's kind of, our assessed valuations can only go up by five percent each year. So there's a cap there, too. But if you consider all of these projects and what you might pay to go to some of these new parks or these new museums, I think it's a, we have, and the nice thing for Mesa right now is with the new construction is really helping us to grow our assessed valuation so we can do these kind of projects. And the 260, 260 million, it's a big number, but relative to, I think, what you're, what we're already seeing around the valley with other cities, it's going to be, it's not going to be, it's going to be the one of lower amounts that we're going to be comparative to, I think. And I'll say this, I know there's been, there's always a concern going out and asking these questions. We have really tried to, as you all know, through community engagements, through master planning processes, through our telephone surveys, that number, that 260, was actually the, a number that we kind of suggested or kind of put out there in a poll, and it seemed to get a good response. So it wasn't considered excessive, I guess. Now, that's one. Now, that's one test, but at least it didn't come out as being a significant negative reaction to it.
Thank you. Any more slides?
Well, just a clarification, Mayor, I think we talked about the indoor recreation center and what we've been clear, and I think based on our conversation, that, that's slide 16, we are not specifically identifying that location in order to allow us the time to focus on exploring and evaluating other locations in that central north, central Mesa, or not north, central Mesa area. So the, I think the presentation now would be, we have an indoor rec center, we recognize we need that, trying to find the best location that meets the needs of that community will be something we can work on once this is approved.
All right. Thank you. So again, these are all projects that are going to be, the details are going to be decided literally years from now, right? So I mean, this is teeing up the funding and then locations and the details of these projects, really, the only thing we know is it's not exactly what we think it's going to be right now. This will be decided a few years from now by future councils.
Yes.
Alicia.
Are we, are we at the end? I do have, can I go back? I know I missed it. Can we go back to the northeast?
Yes, yes.
Oh, sure.
It went really well, just so you know.
I just have one question and a couple comments. And what?
It went really well.
Oh, fantastic. Good.
It was a great discussion.
Well, I just want to make sure I understand, the $5 million for this is within the park itself. It's not outside of the park, not any of the connections, not any of the outside trails. It's within the park. It's the restroom, the parking, the trailhead and the actual trails. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilmember, go forth, that's correct. That amount is within that Bureau of Land Management area.
Okay.
And we're working on proceeding with the other trail connections now. So we're starting a feasibility study, that's outside of the bond funding, getting an agreement in place with Maricopa County will also be outside of that.
Okay.
It's so that we can establish that trailhead location on the southern end of it.
We just wouldn't be touching the, like, the Maricopa County flood control road, but we'd be connecting to it.
Correct.
So, does that make sense? So we would have trails that would go up to their existing, what did you call it?
Maintenance roads.
Maintenance road.
Okay.
So we, and we're working to get access to that, right? But we wouldn't be going in on their road.
Okay.
And paving it and putting lights.
Okay.
And then once you get to Tonto, we're not doing anything in their trails, touching their trails, but that goes to kind of create connection to all of those.
Okay, so we're going straight up to Tonto, we're not going east or west on Thomas? That's not the idea at this moment?
Not with this.
It's not funded. It's, I mean, eventually, that's a conversation we want to keep having, right? I think, and I think some studies are underway on that too.
Okay. My, my, my questions with this in particular is, we've got this fantastic 143 acres or whatever, how are the people that live across the street, say in Desert Shadows, going to get over there?
So, councilmember, go forth. Part of what we're looking at with this bond funding is the entry into that parcel. So we have an area that's a temporary parking lot that's a little further to the east, but there is a cut through in the median currently, and we'd be looking at what we need to do to make that cut through the entry point into this. It doesn't have a configuration right now that makes it a safe entry point, but through this bond funding, we would be able to make those improvements so that that is the entry. And that is already an established crossing to that neighborhood.
See, and you're.
So you're talking about cars, though, right? You're not talking about people?
Well, no, it could be pads.
So, okay, so.
Could be both.
Right.
So to get across McKellips from Desert Shadow, how are we going to do that?
For a consideration of the transportation for our, what are you calling, I don't want to use the manufacturer's name, what are you calling them?
The Hawks?
Hybrid beacons.
I can't use that name. Pedestrian hybrid beacons.
The non-brand.
Hybrid beacons.
I'm trying not to promote somebody. Yeah, so I think that's a valuation we can make because if we're going to create this destination for people to come to.
Right, you want them to be able to get there easily, right?
If they can walk across or drive their bikes across.
So I guess I, I'm just confused, so why don't we include that in this bond?
Because I think if we cannot use money for, if we can keep the $5 million for the trails, we can tap into the transportation fund because the, in our transportation, a separate fund that does projects like that. And that way you could put more money into this project.
Okay.
And so it's like you get both.
I just want to make sure we get both.
No, no.
To me, it doesn't make sense to do this fantastic thing.
No, no, you're right.
And the kid across the street can't even get to it.
No, you're, it's a great.
The other thing is, we have this multimillion, beautiful Red Mountain Center Park right across the highway. How are we going to get there?
Oh, yeah.
Just like, just like for the indoor facility, you want to get to Gene Autry and we were going to build a bridge. How are we going to do that for this? Because it's the same exact thing. You're going to get people two miles away.
I know, I could build a bridge across the canal, I don't know if I could build.
There's already a path over the canal, I'm not worried about that. I'm just wondering, can we include that in the feasibility study? To me, it would be such a disgrace not to get people to that big facility. That's.
Councilmember, go forth, I would say it is in the feasibility study. That's what we're trying to do now so that we can figure out what the right alignment is, what those connection points are, where the trailheads need to be through that study process.
Okay, so we are, we are looking to understand, for sure.
But let's be clear, when we're crossing the 202, we are not in our jurisdiction anymore. That is not our call. That is a state highway, ADOT, and that's, that's a big, that's a, I mean, we can do the feasibility study.
It's a longer project.
I just want to manage expectations, so that is not an easy task.
But the Maricopa flood plan isn't our call either. So I think that it's still something we should look into, right? I mean.
Okay. I'm just trying to manage expectations here. Dealing with ADOT and, you know, I don't know if it's a pedestrian bridge or whatever that is, that's, that is not in this budget, not at all. Because we haven't even had that conversation with them, so.
Haven't even started that.
In the feasibility.
It could be in the feasibility study.
Exactly. I just think it should be brought, it seems logical that you would want to get to one of our biggest recreation facilities if you're going to build out connections. Just, how are people going to get there, right? That don't, that aren't able to drive, a kid, you know, families that want to not get in their car. I think that's, I think, I think we need to think about those connections when we put these facilities in, is what I'm, is what I'm getting at.
Understood.
Thank you.
So on this, really quick, on the project estimate page, this is just phase one.
Yeah.
Okay.
There, you could take this trail system.
Right. I just noticed phase one and phase two were on that list, so I just wanted to clarify that this is phase one.
There's a potential for a lot more, both, both north and south. Is that, we're at McKellips, this parcel, or this?
Brown, we're at Brown on the south side, right?
No, we're up on the McKellips side with the trailhead.
What I'm saying is this goes all the way down to Brown.
Yes, it goes down to Brown.
But we're not going south right now, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And councilmember Spilsbury, the phase one and phase two is not what this regional trail system is. That phase one and phase two was a playground area, it was a remote control hobby area, and what we're focusing on is creating the regional trail system, not those.
So, is, so that, I'm just like, trying to figure out numbers here. So the trail, this slide is not represented on the project estimate page?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, the what, oh, yeah, the dirty sheet, no, no, it's not.
Dirty sheet.
That's what I call it.
Long list.
Got to start with dirt, but you know, that's.
I know we're not putting exact numbers to each project, I'm just trying to kind of figure out what, what money we're talking about. So you said $5 million and I haven't, I just haven't heard that or seen that anywhere.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No, I'm just, I just wasn't aware of that amount, so I went to go look at that page and thought that's what it was.
Right now, yeah, sorry. No, this is trails only, and we've allocated, in that estimate is $5 million, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, because we just, we don't, and you've explained to me why, but we don't have like breakdowns of each of these things necessarily, so that's why I was just wondering. Okay. Because all the parks are on that estimate page though, right?
Can I also ask again, where did we land on the Center Street, where did we land on the Center Street project?
Mr. Brady, what, to what level of detail do we need to address the Safe Streets proposal? I know we would.
So Site 10 has the wording that we've included now to allow us to move forward with the concept and supporting Safe Streets in Mesa, and by, but not eliminating Center Street, but allowing for us to have the council, once the bonds are approved, and having $7 million set aside for Safe Streets, to have a conversation and prioritization. We have not had, you know, specifically on any design of any one of these projects, community input. So we would have that conversation after the projects are.
But this did go around to every open house, correct? The Center Street project?
Yeah, but that's.
Eric, I think.
Yeah, but that's not the detail we would normally do in a community engagement. We'd go to, I mean.
Well, then how are we, just, I mean, isn't that where we're basing all of these projects on? Is that community feedback that we just got?
Not just that, not just, well, for, yeah, but most of our feedback wasn't that specific. And some of it was just, what kinds of projects do you support in categories? Certainly the open house had that, but we have had a specific, when we do pub, public projects, public works projects, when we get the design far enough, we go into the community and think that community where it's being impacted, and we will, you know, door hangers all over that neighborhood and call, bring them in to show them the details.
Right, and none of the projects in the bond package are at that point. Every one of them will go through that. So why is this one different?
Well, because there wasn't a consensus on selecting that one project.
We don't have a consensus on the.
No, we don't. I think at this point, the level of detail that there's political support for is we recognize the amazing potential of the Safe Streets program and we want to tap into that. And so we realize it's going to be future councils that are going to dictate the details of how that money is spent, but, and the Center Street project is absolutely competing for that, but I think at this point, we don't want to do a deeper dive than let's vigorously, let's allocate $7 million, let's pursue this, the federal, you know, that can be leveraged for a much greater amount through Safe Streets.
So we're not even going to identify downtown? We're not even going to say this is for a Safe Street ingress and egress out of our downtown?
Well, does that, what is this, does this slide?
At this, at this point, where we're at today and how it would be presented as being proposed right now, is in the description, it would be very consistent with what the mayor said.
It could be anywhere in the city.
Yep.
I get, I'm just a little confused because I thought that, that project was specific to downtown. It was specific to getting people in and out of our downtown safely in ways other than a car. And, and because, the reason we want that is because we've identified downtown as a place we want to be vibrant and active. And to do that, you need people, you need people walking around. I mean, the status quo is that we have these large streets for cars. That isn't working. So I, I am under the impression, we wanted to sort of, we wanted to change that and bring more people in. And people aren't going to walk around if they don't feel safe and comfortable. So if this is just anywhere in the city, that, I mean, that was the point of this project, was downtown.
We agree, that, that is the point of the Center Street project. But I think right now, there's not political support for identifying that as the project that's going to receive these funds. There is support for vigorously pursuing Safe Streets funding, and that, and that project would compete for this leveraged federal money that we want to pursue. We do have a problem with pedestrian safety in Mesa. We're one of the leading country, you know, cities, the Phoenix Metro for pedestrian deaths, and so I think we acknowledge that we are the poster child for pursuing Safe Streets funding. So there's no question we want to do that. But right now, but we also know that the details of how that money is going to be spent will have to be decided a year or two from now when.
I guess I just would like to make clear, it's disappointing that on the one hand, we want a vibrant and active downtown, and on the other hand, we're not willing to make the choices to get there. And that, we're speaking out of both sides of our mouth.
I think it's premature, I think it's premature to say that. If I were on this council a year from now, I would be voting with you to spend the money that direction. But I think we have to recognize, we don't know what the political atmosphere is going to be when this money gets spent.
Well, so I, I mean, are we, is that how we make our decisions? I thought we had a goal. Again, this is a goal about downtown, this isn't a political decision. And we've hired a mobility expert, and that's what he's going to tell, we're spending a lot of money on a leading nationally-known mobility expert for downtown that's going to tell us that, things like this project. If we're not willing to do them, why are we asking him to come in and give us his expertise on this? It's because it doesn't seem like we have, if we don't have the political will, that's a waste of time and money. I've talked to him, read his books, I know what he's going to tell us. It's, it's a bit confusing and it's a bit disappointing, so.
Yeah, understood. There was a lot of work that went into that presentation and into that proposal. I hope that it bears fruit at some point, but it's just, we're not there yet to make that, that detailed decision for how this money is going to be spent. So I think we, we put that off for another day. It'll be a compelling discussion when that happens.
Okay, so Mayor, wait, I don't want to interrupt, it's urgent.
I think we're done, yeah.
Okay. So I'm just going to, we're not planning on bringing this back again until it comes on your agenda on June 3rd. So I just want to be clear.
To the council meeting?
To the council meeting, to make the decision to call the, well, both calling the election and specifically calling these two questions of public safety for $90 million and parks, recreation and culture, that's probably not the specific title for 170 million. And that's what will be on your agenda on the 3rd for your approval to place on the agenda, that'll be on the June 3rd agenda. Now, there's, I don't think the mayor's here and some, I think Julie, you're on Zoom or whatever. Okay, so I'm just being clear that, so that's why I'm kind of like saying this today is the decision, as long as I've got all the nods, we, we will proceed in that matter. And let me tell you, and Councilman Spilsbury's been good at this, you can tell she's reading all our backup material. What that backup material really is intended to show, there was a lot of projects that wanted to come forward at this time, and I appreciate Julie kind of keeping up to date on that, but it, it's not, this is not easy. This is not easy taking, I can't remember what the dirty number was.
It was about 650 million dollars.
650 million dollars worth of projects, which we, you know, that's not going to happen.
You can't build them all.
So we had to make, yeah, we can, even if, it would be difficult to do that. So we really tried to give you the, you know, what resonated as far as what our master plans were referring to, the community feedback we got through the general plan, through the open houses, through our telephone surveys, our social media surveys, and I appreciate the council helping us because your suggestions really did help us shape much of this. But I do feel like, I think the map at the end, I think, is really helpful, shows all the dots. I think we've tried to do a very good job of trying to get projects throughout the city, and I hope that they will be meaningful, and they'll be meaningful not only on a citywide basis, but also they'll have impact in neighborhoods, in some of these neighborhoods with these parks. So thank you for helping getting us to this point, and we'll be bringing it forward to you on June 3rd. Thank you.
Let me just underline what Mr. Brady just said, this now becomes a political campaign, right? And so as, when we are in these meetings, it's illegal for us to seek to influence the outcome of an election, but when we're outside of these meetings, I think, but it is always appropriate for us to give this information out to the voters. And so we need to appropriately share this information with the voters and, and let these projects speak for themselves as far as advocating for the yes vote. But when we're wearing our political hats outside of this room, I think we can, we can be rah-rah and, you know, talk about how amazing these private, how we want to focus on quality of life. That Mesa is a very attractive city, for us to continue to, to be able to say that, you know, we need to continue to invest in ourselves. So that'll be fun to see how those things get messaged.
And we'll be, we'll be providing council a pamphlet, a educational pamphlet, we do it all the time, that will be online, printed, so you can have, we've even talked about trying to make it specific to your district so that you could have the citywide, but then you could also have something to highlight what's happening in your district too. So we'll be providing for that here in the next month or so.
So, we'll be providing for that here in the next month or so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, thank you for listening through two sessions and for our sequel today. And I wanted to leave you with these drawings. When we were out and about talking to the community, some of our youngest residents provided their feedback and input. And this really is why we build infrastructure for the city of Mesa. This is what community does.
I didn't see the disco ball included in any of our proposals.
No, and we don't have a 10-story slide either, so...
Yeah.
But aquatic centers were very popular with our youngest members of society, so just thought I'd leave you with that. Thank you so much for this morning.
That's great. The idea of hanging a disco ball over the top of the pool really seems like a good idea. All right, thank you again to staff and to council. I mean, that was a very engaging process. Obviously, we don't all agree on every part of this, and it was a painful process to go from $650 million worth of really good ideas down to $260 million of really, really good ideas. So, thank you for all the work that went into that. Moving on on our agenda next is current events and conferences attended. I know we've had to punt this a few times, so I'm sure we've got a lot of things to update on. Julie, would you like to kick us off?
Kick off. Councilmember Summers just saw my list and said he needs to go get another coffee. But I'm not going to read everything on... Okay, back way, on May 7th, I attended the Be Kind People Project Rise and Shine Breakfast, still supporting that great nonprofit and kindness and working together with our city to become the first Be Kind City. We also, that day, did our hydration donation kickoff. We want to bring as much attention to this as possible with the United Food Bank in the chamber. Our goal is 700,000 water bottles, and there's info on the city's website on how to donate water to that as we had our whole presentation earlier, how important that is. And then, let's see, May 8th, on that Wednesday, we had our State of the Arts and Business in Mesa event at the Mesa Arts Center. Appreciate our Arts and Culture Department and Economic Development for putting that together and showing the true economic impact that our arts has on our city. And that evening, most of us were at the Mesa PD Fallen Officer Memorial Service, which was a really beautiful service. On Friday, I was able to attend Jefferson Elementary. In partnership with the Gila River Indian Community, they put in some water refill stations in some of our schools. So, we went and distributed reusable water bottles there. Wanted to bring attention to, our Mesa Contemporary Arts Museum has a new exhibit. We had that grand opening for that exhibit on May 10th, so go check that out. It's always free. Really cool, beautiful art there. A friend of mine actually has art there, so that's really fun. Saturday, May 11th, Councilmember Duff and I attended the MCC graduation where Dr. Jill Biden came and spoke. She has been a huge supporter of MCC and our Mesa College Promise Program, and that was really fun for those students and families to be a part of that. Then, that evening was the East Valley Chamber, Hispanic Chambers, Mother's Day Mariachi concert that many of us weren't attended at. May 16th was our next Academy's, Firefighter Academy's graduation. So, this was the largest one they've ever had. There were 52 total graduate recruits, and 34 of the 52 were Mesa, so that was really exciting to be there. And then, let's see, I'm going to let you do the library. And, oh, on Monday, we got to, so, as a lot of you know, we, the Experience Corps partnered with our Education Department and had, in one semester, had 40 volunteers going and reading with kids to help in our literacy efforts. And so, we had a thank you reception at the Idea Museum for that, which is just really great. And that program's going to keep going next year and continue to grow and get bigger. And I went to Taylor Junior High on Tuesday night and gave them the mayor's award on behalf of the mayor. So, two students received that. And then, lastly, I'm almost done. I wanted to just say, huge congratulations to all of our Mesa high schools who have graduation tonight, including my daughter. Wow, that's just, sorry. The youngest of my six kids is graduating from Mesa High tonight. Sorry. Wow, my emotions are just right there, but congratulations to all.
It was a long process.
It was a long process, so congratulations to all of our graduates. Woo, sorry.
And the charter schools.
And all the charter schools, too. I don't know what their graduations are. Are they tonight, too?
Great, thank you. Who's next? Mr. Summers?
I feel like Julie teed me up, so I might as well go next. I'll just say a few things. We had a few community meetings. One was Phase 5, the final phase of Eastmark Great Park. We had a public meeting on the amenities that we are hoping to put into that park. It was very well-attended. Seems to be very popular. For those who missed it, it's still available online. You can send comments to engineering.info.mesaaz.gov. So, you can go online, see the Phase 5. If you don't see it, just email me. I'll send you copies of it. And you can, we're still receiving some public input on that. We attended the groundbreaking of the Gateway Library that's located adjacent to that park. That was very well-attended. It was pretty impressive how many folks showed up to that. I've already started receiving emails about, okay, that was a great groundbreaking. When are we actually going to put equipment there and start breaking ground? I asked that simple question to Beth Euning, who's our city engineer, and she, like a good engineer, sent me a three-page memo on what that was. And it all boils down to, we're looking at late June, early July. There's a few more contracts to finish up. The contractor is hiring some subs, but that is the estimate of when we'll start seeing a lot of the heavy equipment. So, anybody who's interested, that's when that is going to happen. So, again, also, congratulations to everyone who is graduating from high school. Eastmark High School was last night. There was a little bit of fireworks display there, just so everybody knows. At least in my district, Desert Ridge graduates tonight. There will be a brief fireworks display there. So, if you have sensitive pets or family members, please take care of them. That should happen early evening tonight. Thank you.
Good reminder. Who else? Ms. Duff?
Last week, I was at a CNU conference, is a Congress for New Urbanism. I've been following them for at least 15 years. Last week is in Cincinnati, and Councilmember Goforth was there, as well as members of the planning staff. And we learned how to plan and develop our city through incremental steps for prosperity and livability. The last couple days, I've been in Washington, DC to attend a Smart Growth Americans Champions Alumni Convening for Safe and Multimodal Streets. The CDC and the US Department of Transportation were also part of that convening with educational workshops and how to transform our urban streets and to accommodate all ages and all abilities. In return, we are, from this work, we are becoming safer, healthier, economically more viable, connected, and more connected with our community and kinder to our planet. I'm a 21, 22 graduate of the Smart Growth America program, and I strive to make our city a better place to live for all of our residents. I hope downtown becomes a place where you can navigate outside of a car for all that you need, an affordable place to live by providing car optional living, and we can increase our air quality, our health, our economic viability by being lockable, bikeable for all ages and all abilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Other calendar comments? Mr. Freeman?
So, I want to give a shout out to our Mesa Historic Preservation Office. They're actually doing what's called story maps in the city, and they're going to all over historic neighborhoods, and they're digitalizing them, and they're doing video as well as interaction between historic people in the area. Historic people, that doesn't make sense, but people have historic information, and I find that very good for our city and getting oral history. So, again, a shout out to them for all the hard work they're doing in our Historic Preservation Office. I also attended a meeting for Arizona League of Cities on our Public Safety Military Affairs Policy Committee, which I represented the city on, and it was a great meeting. And so, they're going to move policy towards the state legislature on several different items. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to follow up on the Gateway Library groundbreaking because I think it goes to the conversation we had today about bonds. And in an argument we hear in the community is that, well, when are you going to finish the 2018 bonds and that type of thing? The Gateway Library, there was a serious concern. Mr. Brady put a task a lot of folks on it to make sure that everything that was promised in that library was funded because there was a serious question, given the cost of things, that we were going to be able to do that and successfully by some really good work, hard-working people, that happened. And so, I mentioned a few of them at the groundbreaking the other night, but I missed a lot of them. And so, I want to thank Beth Euning, who is our city engineer, Zach Costia, Ryan Yi, and Lance Webb. I didn't mention you the other day, but I wanted to give a shout out for all the hard work that you've done behind the scenes to make sure that you delivered on the promise that we made to the community. So, thank you very much and for your hard work. Congratulations.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else you'd like to share? I was at a lot of these events as well. The Library Groundbreaking does stand out. That was a very special event, and I think we're all really counting the minutes till that, to that library is up and running. It's going to be an amazing building. Also, last night, I didn't hear people talk about, we were at a CAP dinner last night where we got a pretty detailed report on the challenges that the Central Arizona Project is facing right now. And they're very real and could be very impactful to the state and to our city. So, I appreciate having a heightened awareness of the challenges that we're facing there and the work that we all need to do with our congressional delegation and others to preserve that important source of water in our community. And then, I'll just, on a personal note, that I have a family trip coming up, and I'll be out of town for the next week or two, and so, I will be absent from a few meetings, some important, the June 3rd meeting. Hopefully, if necessary, I can, I'll make sure I'm there telephonically, but I appreciate your allowing me to be gone for a couple of weeks here, beginning in the next few days. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we'll be meeting on Thursday, May 30th for a study session. Today, we're very excited to have the Mesa Business Builders at the studios grand opening. It's a pretty cool space, and will that be today at 11:00 AM to noon? So, I invite everybody to come over to the studios for that event. Monday, the 27th, City Hall offices will be closed to observe Memorial Day. And again, as the mayor mentioned, June 3rd, there's a couple of votes on June 3rd. We're going to need at least five votes, so hopefully...
I'm on Zoom. I do know that.
You can, as long as you can vote, we'll take that. So, just to know that, because that's our budget final wrap-up, and it requires that number, so.
I'll be out of the country, but I think I may...
Well, if we have...
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Six of us at least.
Yeah, we're fine. Yeah, we're going to work the vice mayor really hard on June 3rd.
Good. All right. All right, well, thanks again. There was a lot of work that went into what happened today from a lot of people, and I appreciate, and I just want to express my appreciation to my councilmembers for being great to work with and for being passionate and in a productive way. It's a pleasure to work with you. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.